Seeing as we have a quorum and at 6:30, I'd like to call to order this special deliberation meeting of the Bloomington Common Council on, this is February 12th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Member Flaherty?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
And Asari?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start off the meeting tonight, actually, with some poetry because sometimes the words of other people are more helpful than any words that I myself have. And sort of in honor of Black History Month, I chose a poem by Maya Angelou, and also sort of because she's just a beautiful writer. And I thought that, I was just kind of looking for something that spoke to me today. So, this spoke to me today, and maybe it will speak to you as well. Life doesn't frighten me. Shadows on the wall, noises down the hall. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Bad dogs barking loud, big ghosts in a cloud. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Mean old mother goose, lions on the loose. They don't frighten me at all. Dragons breathing flame on my counterpane. That doesn't frighten me at all. I go boo, make them shoo. I make fun, way they run. I won't cry, so they fly. I just smile, they go wild. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Tough guys in a fight, all alone at night. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Panthers in the park, strangers in the dark. No, they don't frighten me at all. That new classroom where boys all pull my hair, kissy little girls with their hair in curls, they don't frighten me at all. Don't show me frogs and snakes and listen for my scream. If I'm afraid at all, it's only in my dreams. I've got a magic charm that I keep up my sleeve. I can walk the ocean floor and never have to breathe. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Not at all, not at all. Life doesn't frighten me at all. Because sometimes we need to remember that we don't have to be scared. So, our agenda this evening, we have four, kind of three, kind of four items of discussion. First, just a couple notes about collective bargaining and council's rights and responsibilities regarding that. I have a proposal for a council finance committee and a budget task force in the packet that I want to take any comments on from my colleagues. And then we have two different kind of categories of presentation about the convention center with a lot of information to be shared. And hopefully, that conversation, which will probably take up the bulk of the meeting, will help kind of pave the way and clarify some upcoming legislation related to the convention center. We'll close with public comment and then adjournment. So first, regarding the collective bargaining, I don't know if our council attorney wants to start with that in terms of what code says.
Yes, I think there was some information regarding the Bloomington Municipal Code. Generally, collective bargaining negotiations and agreements in city business fall into three different buckets: police, fire, and ASME. Bloomington Municipal Code, Section 2.32, controls collective bargaining between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police. That section of the code indicates that council may designate a person to attend and observe all bargaining sessions. The most recent collective bargaining agreement, the one that's currently in force, has a term of four years and it expires in 2026. So negotiations are anticipated to resume in the middle, no later than the middle of 2026. I was given the date potentially of May 2026. The second type of collecting bargaining, collective bargaining agreement involves negotiations between the city and the Bloomington Metropolitan International Association of Firefighters. Those collective bargaining agreements are governed by Bloomington Municipal Code 2.34. The code states that a member of the common council or their representative may attend and observe all bargaining sessions if the common council so desires. Bargaining will begin prior to the beginning of the salary ordinance and budget-making The existing collective bargaining agreement expires, like the police collective bargaining agreement, on December 31st, 2026. So it's anticipated that negotiations for this collective bargaining agreement would begin in May, around May of 2026 as well. And then finally, the American Federation of State, City, and Municipal Employees, otherwise known as ASME, also has collective bargaining negotiations. Those are not included in the Bloomington Municipal Code. There is no code provision that is applicable at this time. The deputy mayor has indicated to me that there's interest in council having the ability to attend and observe those negotiation sessions as well. But a municipal code provision would need to be drafted to support that. With respect to the timing, again, December 31st, 2026, is the expiration of the ASME collective bargaining agreement. And it's anticipated, again, that those negotiations would begin no later than May 1, 2026. So all three of those collective bargaining agreements have very similar, if not identical, start times in 2026.
Thank you. One of the reasons why I wanted to bring that up, well, two reasons really, because, first of all, to kind of gauge council's interest in participating in some way in ASME, and if there's general interest to add that code provision in so that we can participate in the ASME negotiations in the same way that we participate in police and fire, which is a seat at the table, it's like an observation. It's not a negotiator, it's an observation of negotiations. And then the second reason why I wanted to bring that up is I wanted us to think about the council attorney. Job description includes that responsibility in the description, and I think in the past, the council attorney has tended to sit in on that. But it also, the code leaves open council member sitting in on those negotiations to observe instead of our council attorney. So I wanted to bring that up as a, is anybody interested in sitting in on those next year as opposed to having our council attorney sit in on them? Do we want to change code to sit in on ASME as well? So, any responses to that? Council members who look?
I'm interested, and I am happy to help draft that legislation to change the code. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council member Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand correctly. So all three union contracts are up at the same time, December 31st, 2026. How did that happen? It used to be that we tried to spread these out.
I don't know. I don't know how.
Maybe with the new mayoral administration and the renegotiations with police, it got off. But I'm, I don't know, for those who have been around a while, it seems to me we used to stagger those so that they didn't have to negotiate three in one, at one time. But I am also interested in giving the council the option to observe and attend the ASME meetings.
Maybe I should ask if there's anybody not interested at this point after those first two comments and ensuring through code that council has a seat at the ASME table? Anybody with concern about that? Okay, I'm going to say thank you to council member Zulik for offering to help make that legislation happen, so I just won't think about that. And of course, there's not like a huge time pressure on it because these things don't start until 2026. Is there anybody interested themselves in actually being at that table? If you can kind of predict your next year in terms of your interest level? Sydney, sorry, council members who look also might be interested, and council member, sorry. Okay. So, we can talk about that next year then, and...
But I was, I was going to say that I, just with the long term, I would like to, I mean preemptively say that I would hope that council member Flaherty would be interested in doing it.
Okay, we're nominating others for this. It sounds like this will be a really interesting discussion in about a year from now in terms of deciding whether one of us is going to sit at that table or whether we're going to delegate that authority to the, to the council attorney. So, does anybody else have anything that they want to add to this? Council member Pete Mount Smith?
I understand that the administration is opening parts of the ASME contract only having to do with compensation for equivalent positions between ASME and non-ASME employees, or employees that are both, that are covered under ASME but in two different departments. Those partial negotiations may commence very soon if they haven't already. And so I wonder if we could touch base with the administration and see what the status of those is, and then we might fast-track our ability to participate if those negotiations are starting early.
Thank you. I will double-check on that. Any other last comments about this for the good of the order before moving on to? Council member Rallo?
Just to affirm that our role would be observational and to report back to council but not to engage in the process. I think we're probably, that's understood, yeah.
Any other comments? Great, okay. Then we can move on to item B, which I'm going to point us to our packet right now. This is Council Finance Committee versus the Budget Task Force. And so in my memo for tonight, I've kind of outlined those two different groups. So this more specific proposal comes as a result both of our last deliberation meeting where we talked about committees and also conversations I've had since then with the administration. And so my proposal right now on the finance, or the fiscal committee, is to create a four-person committee, that this year it would be a special committee. So then it doesn't need a resolution to establish, I can just establish it, not at this meeting. I'm planning to do that at the next meeting. And appoint membership to it as both an expedient way to create it, but also so that it can kind of be tried out before we put something into a resolution in terms of its full responsibilities. So, my proposal, four council members, and one of those members will also serve on the Budget Task Force, meet at least quarterly. And I kind of anticipate that like this year, maybe meeting more frequently than that, but in an ongoing way, potentially only having to meet quarterly. Work closely with the controller, who I've had meetings with and agrees to this plan. So work closely with the controller to create a timeline and activity framework for the yearly budgeting calendar, track progress of the budget and fund balances, and then recommending, recommend scheduling for specific discussions and presentations for the full council. And so that's where, instead of, say, the controller working directly with the president, it would work through this, this committee to determine things that the full council needs to be able to discuss and figure out together. And additionally, this committee would help support council staff when writing the council budget, and also do the elected salary ordinance and continue work that the Ad Hoc Salary Committee started last year in terms of that framework with how we make those decisions. And then generally exploring and recommending improvements to the budgeting process, which that last line is another one of those things that like, ongoing, I think this committee needs to think hard about that. But bringing us back to the Budget Task Force, which we said last year that we wanted specifically to help move us toward outcome-based budgeting, would be a short-term role with four members: the deputy mayor, the controller, and then two city council members, one who is also on the budget, or the fiscal committee, to specifically move us toward outcome-based budgeting in terms of that transition, in terms of setting those goals and having those conversations, in terms of figuring out that framework for different departments, and that, both the deputy mayor and the controller, I spoke with both of them, they're good with this plan as well. And then they would pull in people from other departments as is necessary for specific things. So, questions, comments, concerns, things that you feel like I left out? Any, anything? No comments? Fantastic. Okay, great, thank you. So, just so that nobody feels put on the spot right now, I am not going to ask for volunteers for these right at this moment, but please contact me. No, 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 no volunteers to tribute. Send me an email or a text message to tell me if you are interested in serving on one or both of these. And then I will figure out whether we have A, enough volunteers, or B, too many volunteers, and then have further conversations. So if you could communicate that all to me by Sunday so that then by next Wednesday I can have all of this straightened out, that would be great. Any questions? Fantastic, thank you very much. So now we can move on to kind of the main show, which is the convention center stuff. And I think the first thing was that council attorney had received some, the actual lease agreements, I'm not sure whether they're in final form yet or not, but this was the time that Ms. Lanier wanted to pass those out to us. And then, I'm not sure who out there, it looks like this is going to get turned over to Controller McClellan right now to give us the full presentation. Thank you.
I'll just give you a quick introduction before we get started while Lisa passes those out. We have a lot of experts here to give you a lot of information. The way I think it will probably work best for you is for each sort of expert to get, they all have slides, to come up and present their slides to you and then take questions. And if there's anything in your questions that are going to be better answered by a later presenter, they can just defer to that person later. We do have a lot of information to get to, but I want to, the most important thing is to give you a chance to ask your questions to the people who have all of the information. If that, if that plan sounds amenable to you, we can get started. I'll introduce the people who are here in the room to get started. We have members of the CIB. In the front row, we have Eric Spoonmore and John Wyckart. We have Deb Koontz, expert from JS Held. We have Jeff Underwood, the controller of the CIB. We have Schmidt Associates, I'm so sorry.
Sarah.
Sarah. We have Sarah from Schmidt Associates, who's been giving presentations to the CIB for a better part of a year. We have Buzz, we have Buzz Krone, our financial advisor. And I think that covers every, and we have Wetter Brothers, Chris Sealy from Wetter Brothers here to answer any detailed construction questions if you have them. So the first person on our agenda is going to be Sarah from Schmidt Associates.
Thank you. And you could just make sure that you introduce yourself for the record.
As well, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sarah Hempstead. I'm the CEO of Schmidt Associates. Actually, I think we've been giving presentations on this since, before COVID, in some form, one way or another. Eddie Layton is the project manager on this project, and he was going to pull up that presentation, I believe. Is he able to do that?
We're looking for it right now.
Excellent.
Is this the one that's in the packet?
Do you have a packet with this situation in it?
Yeah, okay.
Although it has been altered slightly from what it was.
What you have, I'll call out those differences when we, when we get there. I can do it with shadow puppets, too, if that's, imagine. That's it.
We'll have to scroll. Tell us when you want us to change.
Okay, could you change? That'd be great. Why don't we just start with the project goals page? The project goals for this project have remained kind of our true north from the very, very beginning. If we accomplish no other things, these really are our pillars that the project was built around. One, that we need expanded space with enhanced functionality and flexibility. Two, this project must create inspiring architecture. Three, we need to showcase the uniqueness and amenities of Bloomington. That's really about being authentic to Bloomington's culture, to enhance connectivity in every way that we mean connectivity, whether that's technological connectivity by bike, pedestrian, the community connectivity. And finally, that this project is a model of sustainability. Those have remained our through lines from the very beginning. You can go ahead to the next one. Thank you. Throughout that, this process, we've been fortunate to receive all kinds of public input. We had a large public input session in September, we had elected officials in October, we've been meeting with the BEAT Advisory Committee. And with all of those different groups, where there's lots of different opinions about what this place should be and do, there were through lines there, too, that read very clearly. We should incorporate limestone, we should elevate public art as a part of this work, we should really address pedestrian scale, we should connect with nature in any way that we can. A roof garden was a fan favorite with, I think, every group we talked to. We need to be contextual, and we need to be Instagrammable. Where's the moment where people take their picture? And authentic, which that goes to make this a place that feels and looks like Bloomington. You're doing awesome, thank you. So, we are right now finishing up final design, which is design development. That's when we make the remainder of the big design decisions and moving into construction documents. Oh, that's fun. Thanks, Eddie, that's great, he can have it. So that is, that's the phase we're in right now, and then we're going to start construction documents. Construction documents won't be all the way done, that's all of the detailed drawings that go to the contractor so they can price out and give us bids. Those won't be done until July. However, because of the complexity and the size of this project, there will actually be three different bid packages, and that's so we can get the work that we know, like the site packages and the clearing, we can get that work started while we're still doing things like detailing, door details and window details and writing specifications. So there are actually three bid packages as a part of this project, which means you'll see construction start this June, so June of 2025. By the time we're all the way done with the expansion, it'll be February of 2027, which sounds like a long time away, but it actually is not. That's going to be here before we know it, so we need to get started. If you can go to the next slide, Eddie? Thank you. What we've been spending a lot of time doing in the past few months is going through our final design approvals and regulatory. And so you'll see a not totally comprehensive list of all of that process. We have successfully completed our variances and have those approved at our BZA hearing. We went through the Plan Commission second hearing, and we received their approval. We have already gone for preliminary reading to Public Works. The way Public Works is, we'll need to go back for a final review when the drawings are all the way done. But we've already had our first meeting and have their preliminary approval pending the final, the final designs and documentation. So we feel good to have made those regulatory decisions and progress thus far. Okay, so let's talk about the site plan. And just as orientation, oh, as I feared, this will not show up on my screen. So, north is up. So as you look at the expansion space for the convention center, the convention center takes up essentially all the way to the edges of the block on Third College and Walnut. Thank you very much, appreciate that, thanks, Eddie. And the remainder of the space, really to the south, is taken by Building and Support Services and our loading dock. And that's our loading dock right there. Our loading dock is large enough for two semis and a box truck all at the same time. It is screened from the street. We have street trees on three sides of the building, on the west, on the east, and to the north. We have bicycle parking for upwards of 40 bicycles on the east and on the west. And we have a very small bus drop-off across Third Street, and that's what that, that's what that note is pointing to there. It is large enough to get two buses fully pulled off of the street so that they can drop off on the correct side, if you can imagine the side that a bus door opens, and go straight into the building. Go to the next slide. So now let's take a walk through the first floor plan. On the existing convention center side, fundamentally, that building is remaining as it currently exists. We're not changing the floor plan in any essential way. We are improving the plaza that is to the east, and we need to do that for a couple reasons. One, there'll be more people passing through, through that connector into the hotel, but also we're going to hold up our bridge connector with new structure that's there. And so in doing that, we'll be replacing those plazas and replacing those plans. On the other side of the street, though, things are going to look a lot different than they do today. So the convention center plus the bridge, all in, is about 65,000 square feet. Of that, the exhibit hall is the biggest single space, just shy of 27,000 square feet, right in that big green rectangle. On three sides of the big green rectangle is support space for the exhibit hall, so on the west, on the east, and to the north. That is pre-function space, that is almost all glass walls. And so that was very intentional as a part of our mission to make this place part of the community, the things that are having there, happening there, be very obvious to pedestrians and people walking by, and tempting for people to walk in. It also makes it a great place for us to put, put public art so you can see it from the outside to the inside and get that connectivity. I want to activate the streetscape through that space. Again, we've got the bus drop-off to the north, we've got our convention lobby space essentially on all three sides. And then the exhibit space can break up in multiple ways. The way you're seeing it here in this drawing, we're showing it with every partition pulled. And so with every partition pulled, we end up with seven smaller meeting room spaces and then one large space in the middle. And I say that they're smaller because they are smaller than the space that's in the middle, but they are still very large, each capable of seating more than 100 people in each one of those small spaces. And I'll show you layouts here in, in just a minute. This building will be totally accessible, that's one of the things that we're able to improve upon in this space. We'll also have a new elevator, which will take you to the bridge across the street, should make that easier and safer for pedestrians. And our sports spaces are all to the south. And so that dark gray space and the pink, the pink is a brand-new kitchen, just capable of serving everybody in that exhibit hall space when it's banquet-style and all of those walls are pulled back and it's a big space. It's important to note that that exhibit hall is of a height that it will allow for sports as well. So it is high enough that it meets Indiana High School Athletic Association regulations for volleyball and for basketball, which doesn't seem important, but it is when you're getting those convention and those, and those kids to pay, to pay you a lot of money to be here, support our restaurants and support, support our local community. Everything in the loading dock is behind the, the brick wall that you see there, which is another opportunity we have for art integration. This is probably about as good a place to any to note a couple things as the design has continued to develop. We have been able to maintain our commitment to not use fossil fuels here, and we're also on track for a lead silver building, which we continue to monitor every, every step of the way to make sure we can get all those points. But things like our bicycle racks, things like all of our windows on all three sides, just rack up those, those sustainability points that we want to see in this building. You can go to the second floor, thank you. So on the second floor, we've got a couple things that are pretty important. One, we have smaller meeting rooms that look down onto the exhibit hall. That's important because if you, when you go to big conventions, sometimes there are breakout spaces, sometimes there are offices for the people who are running the show. That is what that second floor is fundamentally intended to accomplish. The second floor is also where we're able to build a bridge connector that gets food and supplies and people safely back and forth across the street when we're full on both sides. The way this current convention center is laid up, you will be capable of running events at both spaces simultaneously, or one-in-one event that runs the entire gambit of the convention center, which is pretty exciting. This will allow us to do a small modification to the existing great room, provide a little bit more pre-function space, which is missing there, so when people are coming in and leaving an event, we get a little bit more space there and also connectivity via the bridge. A really cool asset that we've been able to accommodate in this design, which is different than probably the last time most of you have seen it... which is different than probably the last time most of you have seen it, is the green roof there on the northwest corner. We've been talking a lot about green roofs, and I'll show you some more green roof in a minute. But this green roof is occupiable green space. When we talk about Instagrammable moment, that is a pretty awesome corner looking out towards the courthouse. It's got a great view. We have even accommodated a second staircase from that green roof so we could make it much larger than it was going to be allowed to be by code. So, that's a pretty special little corner of the building right there. So, when we talk about the rest of the green roof, so that is occupiable green roof, space that we could all go and have a glass of wine if it wasn't 32 degrees and raining. But above that, on the higher roof, we have another version of a green roof. And that is truly planting beds that hold water, not occupiable space. And so, what you see there hatched in the green is the green roof that goes above us on the roof proper, which slows water down and catches it. That's good for our lead points as well. While the bulk of the exhibit hall roof, so the highest volume roof, is designed for future solar panels. And so, we will be solar-ready on that high volume. Behind us is the mechanical equipment on the service area roof. We will not be able to see that. That will be buried behind walls. Excellent. Thank you. What you're seeing here is different ways this exhibit hall could lay out. And we could have just kept going, but at some point, we decided to stop. But the point of this space is to be as flexible and as functional as possible. And so, working with Talisha and her wonderful staff, we've laid out some varieties of how these spaces could be. Just a couple of notes for big events. If you look at the round tables with chairs, that's about 1,400 seats, if you could imagine a big banquet of about that size. If you look in the middle on the top, that's exhibit booths. That's about 157 exhibit booths. If you look on the side where all of our walls are pulled up there to the right corner, you've got a center room that accommodates about 450 people and 100-plus in each one of the side rooms. It's really kind of limitless how you can set up this space, which means there's a lot of electrical and power that goes throughout this whole space. That's one of the things that is hard to see when we share things like this, but it's certainly a place where we're going to spend some money making sure that things are functional when they're set up in each and every one of these layouts. So, here we have some elevations of the building as we move all the way around. And I'm going to start on the very, very top because this is the Third Street elevation. And it's a good illustration of what we're trying to do to make this building fit into its context and also be unique to Bloomington. So, the bays of the building, the spacing between the columns, are driven largely from the existing Convention Center and what those bays, what those proportions look like, as is the height of the Convention Center. In order to get as high as we needed to go, we are very close to the height of the existing Convention Center now. So, it's not going to engulf it. It's not going to be the monster building in the space. It really fits into its context well. The red color that you see up there is very similar brick to what's on the existing Convention Center with limestone banding at the bottom and a large integration space for limestone right in the center. That is a great place for public art as we look at where that's going to go and how it's going to be, whether that's logo for the Convention Center, whether it's a permanent art installation, whether it's a temporary rotating one. We're working with the details of that, but what a great place for art installation. It also happens to line up really nicely with the Fourth Street Garage, which is important because we are going to use part of that parking for conventioneers and pull them over. So, having that alignment and relationship is important. On the corner on the top, you can see our green roof and one of our main entrances there facing the corner. And as we go around the corner to the east, which is the second drawing down, again, you can see how we're trying to open up to the street as much as possible. Big glass walls so you can see what's happening inside the Convention Center and so that the people who are inside can be drawn to come out and buy some coffee and some lunch outside the Convention Center. The third drawing down is the south facade. And it is our least pedestrian-friendly space, but there is no space there for pedestrians anyway. That is our loading dock. That is our kitchen, and we face parking lot. Around the corner on the west, you can see our bridge connector. You can see another opportunity for limestone art and integration and more glass as we look into pre-function space. You can also see opportunities for, oh, I'm sorry. Could you go one back, Eddie? Thank you. You can also see opportunities for art integration in our wall that's hiding our loading dock, those three gray squares. Those are opportunities that we have identified, but what the actual pieces of art will be, we're still working on that. Thank you. So, if we were to render it out, this is the view looking at that northwest corner across the street. And you can see a couple of things that I'd like to draw your attention to here that I think are really important. I think you can tell how the building is going to activate the streetscape because it is so open by design. You can see the bridge with an opportunity for art installation there. You can see the proportions of the new building with the existing convention hall and some experiments on how we can use light to identify this as a special place, whether that changes day-to-day because it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month or whether we calm it down a little bit. I think there are lots of really interesting things we can do in a really graceful, artful way here with light. You can go to the next one. Thank you. And now, we've crossed the street and we're about to enter the Convention Center. To your left, you can see the green roof. To the right, just above our main entry point, if I were to walk down the street, I would have rows of bicycle racks to my left on the existing Convention Center. Or I could go across the street to our new plaza right under the bridge. Yep, thank you very much. You can go to the next one. And now, we're jumping inside the building to start to look at how we carry that exterior architecture indoors. And so, when you're indoors, you can see what we've tried to do is pick up on some of that materiality, whether it's limestone blocks that are inside the walls, whether it's wood ceiling that is replica of some of our patterning on the masonry on the outside, working through floor finishes with Talisha and her staff, really to make this a unique space and place. Also, really playing with light and what it can do to bring life to our space. So, next, we are coordinating with Weddell, who's our construction manager, on the final design estimate and any bid alternates. It is a crazy bid world, so we want to protect ourselves, protect you, make sure you have choices. We're moving into construction documents. That's the final details. We're confirming our LEED design submittal. Like I said, I believe we are on track with everything that we said we would do. So, we want to make sure that we're adding up our points correctly and ready for submittal. And then, we're preparing for both our site and our city permit submissions. Would you like me to wait for questions?
Are you done with your part of the presentation?
I mean, I think so, but I can talk about whatever else you'd like.
Wonderful. So, are there questions from council members now for the things that Ms. Hensted, is that right?
That's right.
That Ms. Hensted shared about design? Councilmember Pete Matt Smith.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight and presenting to us. On the east elevation, it's hard for me to tell. So, on the left side of that, so the southernmost side of the east elevation, there's a gray area and then there's a red kind of brick in front of that. So, can you explain what those are? Because I thought this is where the loading docks should be behind the building.
Right. So, it's maybe actually easier to see that if we were to go back to the floor plan, Eddie, if you wouldn't mind. So, what you're seeing, Isabel, see the pink area with the kitchen? That's what you're seeing is that facade that is the back wall of the kitchen in that elevation. And so, it's not in the same, it's a little bit difficult to see in a flat elevation when it is not actually a flat building. But that is what you're seeing right there is that kitchen wall. And then, Eddie, you could go back to the elevation if you would. There you go, and zoom us in. So, the wall with the glass, the wall with the pillars there, the columns, that is the wall that's right on the streetscape. The wall with the, there you go. The wall with the brick and the planned checkpoint area, that's right there. That is the back wall of the kitchen. Does that make sense?
The red brick or the gray? I thought the red brick was maybe a wall.
The red brick?
Shielding wall.
That is, those are brick walls that are the actual building walls of the kitchen and support.
Oh, okay. So, those are the ones that are?
Yeah, they're the ones that are set way back. I guess it's kind of hard to see in an elevation that looks flat when it is really 200 feet further back.
Okay. So, there's no shielding walls just between the parking area and the?
Not from this side? Because we have the building shielding us.
Because what?
Because the building itself runs the entirety of the property line here.
Oh.
It looks like there's a parking lot for that?
Yeah.
Realty company?
Yes.
So, like, the edge of the windows is going to run into the parking lot for the realty company? So, between the sidewalk and, oh, great. That's a good image.
Gotcha. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's more clear to me now.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Raul.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question about accessibility to the loading dock. Is it just primarily through college or is there also Walnut?
So, the only way that
Is there.
You can get a semi into that loading dock is from college. The alleys are too narrow to allow that access. We did attempt it, but it is too narrow. And so, the way that would work, and our civil designers here too, and Bill can talk about it if you'd like more details, but essentially, it's a three-point turn. What it allows semis to do is pull in, pull back, and then pull directly out as they are southbound. So, it's a fairly safe way to do that in that the semi-driver, when they're passing through public space, like the sidewalk, they are only going forward.
Oh, good. That's good to know. What do you reckon is the frequency of trucks coming and unloading?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I have the best answer to that. Does anyone else have a better answer? We can follow up with that. Talk with the Convention Center staff.
It's not that critical. I'm just wondering about the ingress egress of this. I've got a couple more. Could I? Okay. So, you mentioned the facility is LEED Silver. And we're in a 120-year-old Circa building that has LEED gold. And could you describe the obstacles that you confronted? Because I would have expected maybe even a higher LEED standard than Silver.
The LEED metrics have changed. So, were we doing this building 10 years ago, it would have been LEED gold.
They're raising the bar.
Right. It is as simple as that.
Okay. And one aspect of sustainability is durability of a building. We get a lot of proposals here where the buildings, I doubt, are very durable. Needless to say, this should be here 100 years from now, this facilities. Is that anticipated, that its lifespan?
This building is a masonry and steel building. It is built of brick. It is built of stone. It is built of steel. Now, I would never tell you that there's no component in a building that you own for 100 years that you'll need to change because, of course, there are. But this building should be standing at 100 years.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Sorry.
Thank you so much, as always. I particularly the last comment around steel, and maybe this will be a comment for later. I know that we just announced, you know, 20% tariffs on steel and other building materials. And something, of course, we've been saying, I think, throughout all this time that time is a major cost, right, for the Convention Center and even more so now with the sort of risk. But how are we building in sort of risk management and contingencies into, you know, both thinking about financing, structures, materials that are being used and so on?
Well, I think we're going to go deeply into budget in a minute, but I'll give you the highest level version of that, which is we are carrying project contingency here and have been from the beginning. And the method of construction that you've chosen by bringing on our contractor to be a part of the discussion early is a wonderful tool to help us mitigate that. So, as we've been working through value engineering solutions from the beginning, and I'll differentiate value engineering from cost-cutting, we've been working with the contractor to say, is there a better way to get the same quality? Is there a trade we could make and still be as energy-efficient? So, we've been doing that since the beginning, since the contractor has been on board, have another voice. And when we get up to talk about budget, we'll go a little bit deeper into where the contingencies are.
Questions from council members?
Okay, I'll go ahead with one then. I want to understand a little bit more about the green roof, not the one. So, there's the accessible green roof. And then, it looked like the perimeter of most of the building would also have some kind of green roof element. So, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about what that consists of, how it would look like from the street, and also, like, the maintenance of that.
Those are all great questions. So, it will be on a very tall roof. So, from the street, you are not likely to see the green roof at all. Most green roofs, and this one too, will be planted with things that are drought tolerant. And so, you will probably see a lot of succulents, and you'll probably also see some grasses. And so, you will be able to see the green roof from other buildings in Bloomington. You just will not be able to see the green roof from the street here. The purpose of that green roof, which is low growth, is to catch water and slowly release it, right, rather than just dumping water into a sewer system. In Indiana, green roof gardens look like your garden at home probably does right now in the wintertime. That is the reality of green roofs. They still do an okay job for vegetation catching the water, but they'll brown out and they'll green up. Brown out in the winter and the cold months, green up in the spring. Because they're going to be drought tolerant, they won't require much in the way of watering, but we will provide a means to water them should we be in a very, very long drought environment.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Raul.
Soil depth of the green roof?
Still working it out, but it won't be very deep. It'll probably be six inches, eight inches. And it won't be straight soil either, right? It'll be a planting mix.
Yeah, I was just curious about, was there any discussion about, in some facilities, they actually grow food on rooftops?
No, we did not discuss that here.
You've got a kitchen downstairs. Could it have fresh greens upstairs?
That is true. I will point out that that roof at the front is sloping. And so, I'm not particularly wanting people to walk there in particular. But no, we did not discuss this as occupiable. And so, for it to be an occupiable roof that grows food, it would need the elevator access as well as stair egress, as well as protective railings, and we have not done that here.
So, this is to mitigate heat island effect and to absorb water and so forth? That's its function?
That's its function.
Got it. Thanks.
Smith?
Yeah, just briefly. So, looking at the interior design concepts, I assume that there will also be tables at a height for people with wheelchairs?
Yes, we haven't picked out?
Example here is just, you know, in the lounge. So, hopefully, in the lounge, there will also be?
Thank you. That's a great question. We have picked out zero pieces of furniture for this at this juncture. That will come, but that's a part of a separate package after the building. But the answer to your question is yes. There will be accessible furniture solutions throughout this building, just as there are accessible doors and restrooms and everything else. All right.
I know that the main goal of today is sort of for us to become comfortable with some of the leasing agreements and, you know, something like that to sort of preempt questions that we might ask later. Excuse me. And I know a lot of the questions we're asking are sort of more like due diligence type questions. But I'm somewhat curious, you know, particularly when we talk about like the LEED certification and things like that. And in the broadest sense, like, are there things that council at this moment or any of the other city partners can do other than the obvious, right? Like, pass things quickly and stuff like that. But like, are there things, like, when we're just thinking about these sort of last stages and where we're at on the timeline? Like, what meaningful contributions can we continue to make at this stage to, you know, make this a better, continue to make it better to make it, you know, everything that could be? to, you know, make this a better, continue to make it better, to make it, you know, everything that it could be? Like if we, if we at this point wanted to say, actually, well, you know, it would be great if we went up a level in lead, just saying that as a, as a thought experiment, but like, like what, what could we do to support the, the efforts that you're having? And are you running into any roadblocks that we have power over?
Thank you for the question, I appreciate it. It has, it has been a long few months of getting through our regulatory processes, but we're, we're there now. We've had great leadership from our site team and great help with the city of Bloomington, and the county, and zoning, kind of coaching us through, through the process. We appreciate that. We are always appreciative of feedback and input, and so if you wanna hang out at a CIB meeting with us, and, and ask questions, bring ideas, those meetings have changed the things that we have added to the design. So things like adding more limestone, things like the butterfly roof, what makes sense in terms of bikes, and where they are, and connectivity, a lot of those, those came from input at those, at those sessions. So we, we are always appreciative of, of that.
Just a quick follow-up, in, in terms of where we're at right now in the timeline?
Sure.
So from sort of now to, you know, March 5th, yeah, thanks for putting that up. You know, like what, what is helpful from, from yours, from your side in terms of input we could give at this stage?
Well, one of the things we'll definitely be working on is public art with our BEAT advisory committee, and so I think that would be something council would be very interested in providing, providing names for maybe, or people who might be interested. That would be very helpful. Yeah, and, and any ideas on community connectivity? I mean, I think that's something that is a, it's a more a programming question than it is an architectural one. But anything we can do in the architecture to enhance the connectivity? That was one of our directives from the beginning. It's something that we've heard clearly. Convention centers are great for bringing in visitors and driving revenue, but the thing that they're really good for is the community that they serve. So anything that we can do to make this feel like a place where everybody belongs? I'd love to hear those ideas. Thank you.
Councilmember Raul?
So you talked about sustainability and, and some of the aspects of this, and since this is a facility that's gonna get a lot of people coming through on a regular basis, you're going to have a lot of wear and tear on things like carpet, which probably even need to be replaced every five or seven years, or something like that. Have you explored carpet that would be, you know, a cradle-to-cradle sort of closed loop-
Sure.
Instead of, you know, tearing all this out, which goes to the landfill?
Yeah, we, we've explored low VOC carpeting, we've, and we will definitely be using carpet tiles, which can be recycled and come from recycled material. We have not specified cradle-to-cradle, but we have specified recycled material and tiles, so that you're replacing in part and not in whole. We'll also specify attic stock for the carpet, so that as you switch it out, you can take tiles out, clean them, and replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll take one. It's kind of a logistical question, but in terms of delivery is, will all deliveries to the convention center, once this is done, just go to the new building as opposed to the old bit? Because I'm assuming that we have deliveries right now at our current convention center, and I'm not entirely sure how that works right now, but is the new convention center gonna entirely replace anything that happens at the current facility?
That's an operational question, which is probably above my pay grade, but I can say this. We are building a loading dock that is much, much easier to use, but we are not closing the existing loading dock. So the potential is there to use both, though if I were unloading a semi, I would be going to the, well, I wouldn't be, because I, I couldn't make that turn. But if I were using a semi, I would go to the new loading dock. But we're not gonna close the other, so it could be used.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other last questions for Ms. Hemstead? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and who, who's next?
Good evening, Jeff Underwood, Controller for the CIB, along with my co-presenter Deb Koontz, Principal with JS Health. We have just a couple of slides that we want to show you, and I'm gonna turn it over to Deb to get us started.
So in terms of the budget and the scope, what you saw a few minutes ago from Sarah Hemstead, the architect, is the scope of the project, but if we were to summarize it on a single page with words, rather than pictures, right? This is it. We have a convention center expansion, so all the new construction, all the site, all the utility work, everything associated with creating that new building is part of the scope. The scope also includes an overhead bridge, which includes the new construction of that, and the associated site and utility work associated with creating the bridge between the existing building and the new building. And again, there's a lot in that, but that's, at its base level, that is the scope. We are also including the existing, in the existing convention center, the CIB has approved replacing the existing windows, which are problematic, separating the fire and water service, adding some kitchen, warming kitchen equipment. And then masonry repointing is really the exterior of the building to protect the envelope of the building as well. And then as funding allows, we are looking at some potential alternates that are listed here, and that's only if funding allows, because we know that there's been some HVAC units, if there's any renovation, and then maybe potentially increasing the green roof at the, at the new building. So in words, that is the, that, that's the scope of the project. And obviously, everything that's, all the details and the graphics that Sarah has provided are really support to that basic scope. So as you consider the bond issue, this is the scope of the project. If we want to go to the next slide.
So we, we put together a total budget that can encompass a four-year period, 2024, through the three-year construction period through 2027, all-inclusive, including the operation of the CIB. And we've estimated that, and are working at a budget of seventy, just over $7.7 million. As you can see, the, the largest portion of that is $52 million, which is the construction budget, and Deb can talk about that. And then other direct costs, as you can see there, including four years for operations for the CIB, which would include commissioning agents, the owner's rep, and then legal controller and other costs associated with that. So we're trying to give you that full picture, rather than a year-by-year. And then when Buzz, he, he has that broken down on a year-by-year basis for you. And note that through the end of 2024, we had expended $936,000, $936,000 of that. So I'll let Deb talk about the construction and the contingency.
Yeah, let me, allow me, on the construction side, there are many components of the actual construction. And as you can see, it is always the largest amount. It is where you have the most risk associated with the construction. And so we want to make sure that we are appropriately carrying contingency within that construction contract. But also, there is, it's very typical in the industry for us to carry contingency outside of the construction contract, right? And when you take the two numbers, if you take, I'm gonna round numbers here, $4 million that's in the contingency of the construction, plus the 1.2 million that's shown under the other cost, you can see that, that that gives us a 10% contingency of that 52 million. So it allows us to get to that 5.2 million. That is typical, right, to do 10% of that construction cost? And so I just want to see, even though it's shown in two places on the budget, it's customary to do that. But we do have it covered in terms of 10% of that contingency. Sarah, you, you, councilmember, you asked about the steel, right? Fortunately, US Steel has been required on Bloomington public contracts for many years, and so we won't, you know, hopefully we won't see too much of that, but there's, we're always paying close attention. Weddell's in the audience, and, you know, they are the ones who see that day-to-day and what those changes are gonna be. But the contingencies do help really buffer to ensure that, that those construction costs, and so that is what those contingency- Again, just for clarity, it's shown in two different line items, so you do have to add them together to see the 10%.
We'll be, that, that's, that's it for us. We're, we're happy to take questions at, at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I was expecting that to be longer. Are there questions? Councilmember, sorry?
Thank you so much. Just building off of this question of risk management, and, and again, then also my last question about really just thinking forward about ways that we can continue to help and so on. But outside of the, the financial contingencies, like what are the other risks that, that we see to, to everything? And what ways can, can we contribute to ameliorate those risks?
Well, one of the things that I, I am confident that Weddell Brothers is already doing, but they will need your help and everyone's help, is the more bidders we have on bid day, the more competitive the bid will be, and the better it will be for everyone. So encourage your friends and neighbors, and those who are listening on the call tonight, who are doing construction, right? Talk to Weddell Brothers, contact them. If you provide carpet, go talk to them. If you provide steel, talk to them, right? We will need every single trade. We need elevators, and roofing, and masonry, right? Literally, with new construction, you almost need every single trade. And so I think that really is a way to continue to, let's get that message out there, because the more bidders we have on bid day, the better off we will be. Yeah.
And I'll add to that, that we also utilize resources with the county and the cities. Anytime we have meeting notices, bid packages, requests for quotes, we work with the city and the county to get those posted as well on all of their various sites as well, so.
Thank you. That question reminds me of a union labor kind of related question. Am I remembering correctly that, is there a requirement for union labor, or is there a strong preference? How is that?
So that is something that the CIB is still considering. They're, they have heard from labor and have made some recommendations. We've also done some research with what other capital improvement boards are doing. So before the first bids go out, I think you'll see that the CIB is going to, you know, take some action related to that.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, who look?
Under the impression that Weddell Brothers only use union labor, is that the case? I know we have Mr. Cioli in the crowd.
Chris, do you want to come up and address that?
Chris Cioli, Weddell Brothers. So to answer your question, Weddell is signatory to collective bargaining units associated with the carpenters, laborers, and operators. So anything that falls within those trades or can be claimed by them, we will in fact have, we have no choice. We've entered a collective bargaining agreement with them. Oh, yeah, okay. So as a CMC, construction made at risk, Weddell can bylaw can bid on and compete for up to 20% self-performed work. So it is limited in this delivery method as well, so add a max 20% of the work.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Raul?
A question about the financing. Is there more to come, or is it?
There's more to come. We, we, we wanted to talk about the budget that we put together that we've passed along with the city, and they've been utilizing, and this is what was presented to the CIB as well, so we've been consistent with this presentation. And when Buzz gets up, he'll talk about the other elements, which is actually the funding of this budget.
Then I'll hold off for a moment, thanks.
Comment and just say thank you for that. I'm, I'm glad to know that we're using US Steel, just as a kind of general thing. I'm glad to know that, because I had questions about those tariffs too. And so hopefully that won't make as big an impact on this project as it might otherwise have, so. Thank you. I think then, we're on to the next. Who's up next? Next in the hot seat. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Buzz Crone with OW Cronin Associates, CPAs and municipal advisors. And I've got some slides. Do you have mine? They should be next in line, I believe. Yeah, let's go ahead to the, the, there we go. I thought I'd start out with an executive summary, and then we'll come back to the executive summary at the end. The total project costs are about $70, $70 million. We're proposing to utilize approximately $20 million of existing food and beverage, you know, cash balances that we've accumulated over the past four years. And the issuance of $50 million of lease rental bonds. And we're anticipating that we would have a backup pledge of local income tax, ed it specifically, as merely a means of credit enhancement. We don't ever intend to use ed it revenues for bond payments. You use those for your operating funds, but it makes a big difference to have a credit enhancement such as that with the rating agencies, and then obviously in the bond sale itself. Should get us in that double A category that we're accustomed to here. And, but just by nature of a standalone revenue bond is not as, well, it's, it's less risky to have a backup, and it's very common to do that. You've never had a, a local income tax backup on other bond issues. But, well, for instance, with the utility revenue bonds, they have a long history of producing certain levels of revenues. With the food and beverage bonds, it's a little more risky than your sewer bonds revenue, because, well, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what happened during COVID here in just a minute. But we're, we're putting in a lot of other protections to ensure that we never have to utilize the local income tax backup. One, one of the things that we're doing is to put in a revenue station, pre-fund a revenue stabilization fund upfront, out of our existing cash that we've accumulated from having food and beverage revenues over the last few years. We're going to set aside, it's sort of like a one-year debt service reserve, but we're just calling it a revenue stabilization fund, so that if, if there ever was a downturn from something like COVID, you've got a pretty good nest egg to absorb significant interruption of, of those revenues, should that ever occur, hopefully not. We've also made conservative assumptions about the interest income during the construction period. Those bond funds and the revenue stabilization fund will be invested. And I think right now, the controller's informing, you're earning about 4.5% on your Trust Indiana deposits. We've just used 3.5% as a projection for, you know, throughout the construction period, and then beyond the construction period for, for the revenue stabilization fund. But we're looking at a 20-year term. We would be looking at making lease payments during the construction period, about two and a half, little over two years, because we'll be still able to utilize the existing convention center. So we have something to lease while we're building the new convention center. Oftentimes, if you don't have an existing facility that's something that can be inhabitable and utilized, like you do here, you would have to capitalize two or three years of capitalized interest costs, which would increase the size of the bond issue considerably. So we're fortunate to be able to have that existing facility, so that we can use that as a basis for making lease rental payments during the construction period. And then we'll have that revenue stabilization fund that could be utilized to make the final bond payment. The food and beverage taxes scheduled to sunset in the year 2045, so. It's possible we could get an extension, but we're not counting on any of that. We want to live within the existing parameters that we have right now. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. This is a history of, we started receiving food and beverage revenues in March of 2018. This is a history of, we started receiving food and beverage revenues in March of 2018. And then you can see the yellow, can you slide that up just a little bit more? Just, there you go. So we get those totals in there. So in 2019, we generated about three, little over $3 million. And then during the COVID years, we saw a decline of about $600,000 in 2020. And then it bounced back, started bouncing back in April of 2021. We're back up over 3 million, about 3.2 million. And then a big jump in 2022, we were at just about 3.8 million. And for the last two calendar years, we've averaged about $4,139,000. So that's sort of the history report and we would expect those revenues to increase just with normal inflation as restaurants charge more for, and then the growth that the city experiences will also help those funds. And I know there's an issue with the town of Alitzville wanting to get food and beverage revenues. That should not impact the food and beverage revenue stream for the city. It does the county, but it won't impact the revenues from the city. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Jeff and Deb kind of went through the project budget, but they've, and we've worked closely with Jeff in modeling the cash flow projections during the construction period. And so this first slide shows what we expect to use food and beverage revenues from throughout the construction period. And again, the hard construction costs are estimated at 52 million. Then there's about another 18 million of, you know, other fees, design and inspection fees and so forth that bring the total project up to a little over $70 million. Some of the other expenditures that we want to make sure we have cash flow for during the construction period are making those lease payments. We've assumed, I believe, seven months of lease payments in the first year in 2025. That as soon as we issue those bonds, that we'll start making lease payments to the, towards the, being able to make bond payments when they come due. And we also want to pre-fund the revenue stabilization fund, which you'll see, we're anticipating about a $3.8 million annual lease payment. It'll be paid semi-annually, about 1.9 million based on the most current estimates we've got from Stifel regarding a 20-year bond issue. And we probably have a little flexibility in that number, but at that level, we would expect to have debt service coverage of over 110%, meaning that the food and beverage revenues would exceed the amount that we need for the lease payments by about 10% going forward. So our uses of funds during the construction period is about just under $84 million. And can we jump to one more slide here? Thank you, Lisa. Our resources during this period, we're starting out in the, with cash on hand as of the end of 2024, was just under $21 million. And we would expect to expend about 19.8 million in that first year. And part of that is funding that revenue stabilization fund. So keep that in mind. That's a, something that we'll do right upfront as a credit enhancement and also as protection for the city going forward for any fluctuation that could occur in the food and beverage revenue. Then I think we've got pretty conservative estimates on interest income during the construction period. We're expecting to earn at least 1.3 million over the construction period. And that, I believe that's going to be a conservative number. I think it could very well be about 1.6 or so million. But we don't want to come in with aggressive projections on things such as that. Then on the revenue stabilization fund, we should, again, using three and a half percent, we should earn about $133,000 per year in that fund. And we're showing all that as a resource during the construction phase if we need And we'll also have food and beverage collections of anticipating about 12.4 million of collections during the next, you know, '25, '26, and '27. So that, along with the $50 million of projected bond proceeds, we come up with just under $85 million of resources for the project or about 1.2 million. You know, we've got another cushion there for contingencies on the project, about 1.25 million. So that's sort of the resources that would, are projected to exceed the uses of funds during the construction period. If we go to the next slide there. The lease rental payments, we're anticipating a yield on the bonds of about four and a quarter percent in today's market for a 20-year term. Again, we hope that's a conservative high estimate, but bond rates have been pretty stable and we believe that's a reasonable projection and we've confirmed that with Stifel, the underwriting firm. So the, the annual lease rental payment would be, and this includes more than just the principal and interest because there's always a little, we want to cover the fees that the trustee will have and so forth, but we've rounded that to 3.8 million. And we expect to have funds remaining for the, the lease payments of, or funds available for the lease payments of 4, 4,139,000 plus the interest income on the revenue stabilization fund. That should get us up to, close to 4.3 million of annual income to the food and beverage funds. And that would produce about 112% coverage ratio. We wanted to have at least 110% coverage ratio. Let's go on to the next slide. I thought there was one more in there, but.
I removed your last slide.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, if we go back to the first, actually slide two, I just want to sort of end with the executive summary here again. That, if you can go up, yeah, there we go. Perfect. So again, we're looking at roughly a $70 million project, 20 million of existing food and beverage cash on hand, $50 million lease rental bond issue. And we anticipate earning at least 110% coverage. And the, again, the local income tax pledge, which is just the edit, the economic development income tax revenues, you also get certified shares. So between the two, you're getting about $33 million a year in local income taxes. I believe the edit portion of that's about 17 million. So the summit project, the TIF project, that's also being anticipated up on the north side is going to probably also request that similar type of, that'll be a TIF bond issue, but we're anticipating the potential local income tax backup on that particular project as well. And you'll still have, you know, 240% coverage just pledging the edit. And if you had, if you did pledge both certified shares and edit, you'd get 400% coverage on the lit pledge. But again, that's just going to be a credit enhancement. No plan to ever have to draw on that local income tax to make bond payments. Particularly with the coverage ratio we're projecting and also the one-year, the 3.8 million revenue stabilization fund. So is that clear as mud?
Clear as mud. Describe it for me. Do any council member, members have questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to expound on where you left off, there's no need to use lit funds.
Correct.
Can you imagine an eventuality where that would be necessary?
Well, we think it will help to get a double A rating. That's the only reason that it's in this mix. But once the pledge is made, that pledge lasts for the life of the financing, 20 years. It's possible it could be refunded, you know, if interest rates come down, there's usually a 10-year call protection. That'd be something in the future we could look at if, if rates come down enough to make that a refunding worthwhile. You've done a number of refundings over the last five, 10 years that when it makes sense to do that, you can bet the underwriters will be beating down everybody's doors looking for an opportunity to refinance that. And we'll certainly keep you apprised of that too. But there'll probably be a 10-year, it's customary to have a 10-year call protection for the bondholders where you agree not to call them early for 10 years. Good question, though.
So just to, could I add one more since we're sort of on this similar topic, which is any penalties then other than, you know? So if interest rates aren't ideal now relative to a couple of years ago, if they become favorable again, is, can we refinance and is that, is that, are there any penalties for that?
Is it feasible to do it before 10 years? Is that the question?
Is it? Yeah.
Yes, but you would have to defees the bonds by, it would have to be a pretty significant drop in interest rate because you'd have to fund the escrow to pay everybody off at the call date, which would presumably be 10 years out. We can talk to the underwriters to see if we could maybe shorten that to eight years or something, but there are, yeah, that's, we call it an advanced refunding where you're refunding it in advance of the call date, but you still have to fund, you know, all the payments up through the call date. So sometimes, you know, as you get close to the call date, that becomes more and more feasible. But, but it would be sort of an economic defeasance. You know, if rates go down to 2% again, yeah, well, that would be real feasible, but.
So what about retiring the bond early? Is that, is that a possibility to say we're flush because food and beverage tax and yielding more than we anticipated?
Yes, the extra 10%, presumably in 10 years, we'd have two years of, at least two years of, in that revenue stabilization fund. And after the call date, you know, after, let's say 10 years, we can start calling the last bonds for early redemption. And they're usually the most expensive bonds, the ones that are out on the 20-year term. But that is possible to do that and assuming we hit those coverage ratios and assuming, you know, that's entirely possible to shorten that term, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but going off of what Councilmember Rallo was asking about, what if we have another pandemic? Then we are going to tap into those lit funds, I assume.
Well, that's why we've got that revenue stabilization fund to be able to absorb, if, for instance, we had another COVID-type situation and looking at what the drop was in revenue, let me, can you slide down to that table where we showed the, right there? Yeah. We did see a 20% drop from 2019 to 2020. At that point, that was about 600,000. A 20% drop today would be about 800,000. There would still be money in that, that revenue stabilization fund after the construction is completed will continue to grow to the extent we are hitting the 110% coverage ratios and earning some interest on top of that. But hopefully, we're not going to see anything as severe as what happened during COVID when a lot of places had to shut down for a long period of time. But that's why we put that revenue stabilization fund in there to protect from ever having to actually use the local income tax backup.
Okay, gotcha. I have another question, but I can wait. So in your presentation, how did we get from a $70 million project to $83,657,000 in total project costs? What?
The, the part that's below the 70 million, it includes all of the lease payments that would be due during the construction period. So that's really not a construction cost. And we've got the food and beverage revenues to fund those lease payments. That was about 9.3 million, I believe. And then there's another 3.8 million that would be pre-funding that revenue stabilization fund. On the, can you jump down two slides? Yeah, actually go back up one. I apologize. Okay, right here, you'll see, actually, it's 9.8 million of lease payments that would be due for seven months of 2025 and full year payments in '26 and '27. And then pre-funding that revenue stabilization fund. That, I guess I should have labeled that as total cash flow requirements rather than, it's, it's really not a direct project cost, but it's a cash flow issue during that construction period that we want to make sure that we're covering all those bases.
Okay. And I'll have more questions on lease payments a little later. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you so much. Could you just clarify the source of the 3.8 million dollar fund?
Okay, that, that comes from, we have the cash on hand.
So from food and beverage?
Yes.
Got it.
It's all food and beverage money.
Okay.
And like I said, at the beginning of this year, it was just about 21 million that was on hand. And we're putting 3.8 million directly into the revenue stabilization fund. On the day we close on the bond issue, that will be funded out of the existing food and beverage cash.
And this, this may be a question more so for the controller, but what was the antithesis of using the lit funds? Like what's the, were there other options?
That was really one of our recommendations so that we would get a high bond rating.
But was, were there no other tools available of things that we could back it with?
Well, you could back it with property tax, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, with.
We didn't want to go there either. But, and originally, we were looking at maybe stretching the bonds out over a longer period of time until the bond lawyers told us that it all sunsets in 2045. So, so at that point, you know, we reduced the term to the 20 years, but we still pre-funded that, that revenue stabilization fund out of the existing cash we've already accumulated.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, I'll take one, and I don't know if this is the right time to ask it or not. I still feel thoroughly confused about the whole lease thing. Are we going to hear more about that next?
Why it's a lease financing, you mean?
No, like, I mean, a lease is usually if you're like renting a property. And, and so I'm kind of, I, I see Counselor Rice standing up. So maybe that is, that is next, and I should just kind of hold that.
You want to take that?
Yeah, that's a perfect segue. And I was waiting for Buzz to get done so I can get up here, chomping at the bit. So, so...
Let's make sure that there aren't any more questions for Buzz before we...
I've got a point of order. I was just notified that some people are watching this on Katz, but they're, but they're not able to join the meeting through Zoom. Is there a problem with allowing people in? We might just pay mind to that. Is it working? What's that?
There's nobody in the way.
There's no one there?
See?
Okay. Well, just, just to FYI.
Are there other people on Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
13.
Okay, great. I think, go ahead. Introduce yourself for the record. And thank you very much.
I'm Margie Rice, Corporation Counsel. One of those people in the online, should be Tenley Drescher-Rodes. If you can, I'm not going to actually use slides because I'd like Tenley to be able to be seen on screen. So Tenley is our bond counsel, and she and Scott Peck have been working closely with us as we've been moving forward in this process. I'm going to just highlight a few of the things that are in your packet and talk a little bit about the bond lease financing. So we are utilizing Indiana Code 36-1-10. That is a chapter of the Indiana Code that is about this certain type of lease and lease purchasing structures. In your, in your packet, there are a couple of slides that talk about why we do this and why this option is available. It's, it's available to finance projects that political subdivisions have that we would normally fund with general obligation bonds. It enables us to avoid the constitutional debt limit for big projects like this. There are, there are, the advantages to, it's that we, it can be a little bit more nimble by creating this nonprofit building corporation, which has already been created. It's called the City of Bloomington Public Building Corp. The lease that you were handed a paper copy of today, and I sent it electronically to, to your attorney, Lisa, this is a work in progress, the draft lease. You, the one that went in your packet did not have numbers in it in terms of lease payment amounts. We have numbers in here now. They're slightly different than what Buzz had mentioned. It has, that the lessy, who will be the city, agrees to pay the rental for the lease, an amount of $4,500,000 payable in two equal semi-annual installments. Those may change. But the city is going to be the, the entity leasing the buildings. The building corp will be the owner of the buildings. We are working with the county right now. The county is transferring the land that they have acquired over the years for the building corp to the CIB. CIB will transfer it to the city, or at least the existing convention center, and the land for the expansion to the city, who will then transfer it to the building corp, and the building corp will be the owner. You heard Buzz say that by, by having the existing convention center being part of this lease, we can avoid capitalized interest. So that's one of the things that we're going to do. And so, so this, utilizing this statute, there are several steps that we have to go through, and we've already gone through some of these. So you had the petition signed by at least 50 taxpayers already has come to you. You've adopted the resolution that the project was needed. If you look in your packet, there's a timeline, and it shows that we are going to be noticing a public hearing on the lease. That is required by statute. That we expect that notice to be issued and to the newspaper this week. It will be published on the 21st of February. You'll have your meeting on the 5th of March. That's where you're going to approve the preliminary plans and specifications, those that you heard about tonight. That's when we'll conduct that public hearing on the lease. And the council will be asked to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the lease, which will be in more final form then, pledging, I mean, this is pretty much final form. It's just going to have the different numbers. Pledging the food and beverage tax and that lit backup to the payment of the lease rentals and approving the issuance of the bonds by the building corp. Again, statute allows the building corp to issue the bonds, but again, you have to adopt the resolution to allow that to happen. And the building corp will be having its initial organizational meeting this month. The building corporation members are Sue Scambalieri, who is a former council member and on the Redevelopment Commission, Sue West, who is a former city comptroller, former county council person, and Larry Allen, who's a former county, or city attorney. Sue West is also an accountant. And so those are the initial members of the Board of Directors. And once you guys have your March 5 meeting, if all that goes as planned, then the building corp and the city will execute the lease. And all of these meetings, the building corp, we are going to post public notice of the meetings so the members of the public can attend. They'll be here in City Hall. And I think that's it that I wanted to point out, although Tenley is online, I see her there in the corner. And if I have forgotten anything or misspoke, Tenley will correct me. Tenley, do you have anything you want to add?
You actually did an excellent job, so I have no corrections. What I may do is just speak a bit more about the lease itself, anticipating a question that I think I heard from a counselor, one that was going to come up. Again, Tenley Drescher-Rodes with Fagri Drinker Law Firm, serving as bond counsel for the, the city and helping to get this transaction, this issue, it's completed. I, I know it probably, this is a different, as, as council had stated, this is a different form than what you're used to. I know that in a traditional financing that usually comes before you, the council is passing a bond ordinance, and then the council is the issuer of the bonds that are paid with, you know, various revenues, whether it be tax revenue or some other type of city revenue. As council stated, this is a different structure so that we can, you know, just, at its simplest explanation, it is to avoid constitutional debt limit problems. This is used by cities and schools for these large construction projects when the amount of the bond that would be issued would cause problems in, in bouncing up against, when combined with other debt, a constitutional debt limit. So because of that, the courts, Indiana state courts have long-held interpretation that a lease financing, so a lease that is entered into by a unit such as a city, the payments made, the lease payments made on that do not constitute debt. Because, so that is why this structure exists. That is why the building corporation that has been formed is going to be the one to issue the bonds. And the way that the, this building corporation has no assets other than the project that will be constructed, that it will own for the life of the bonds. And because of that, the, the only assets that this building corporation will have will be the lease rental payments that are paid by the city from the food and beverage revenues. The building corporation then uses those lease revenues to pay debt service. And actually, it's, it's a seamless, through a trustee and a trust account, it's a seamless process of the lease payment revenues going in, and then the trustee pays, makes the debt service payments on the bonds. So because of that, in essence, we're just using a couple of different steps and structures, the result being the same in the end, which is the city is using the food and beverage tax revenue to pay debt service on the bonds. It's just through the mechanism of this lease. And that's why this lease that you have a draft of is not like the type of lease that you would normally see if you were renting a building or an apartment or whatnot. This is what's known as a financing lease. It's very standard, as you can see, very short. And it is, the purpose of that is simply to allow those payments to be, you know, put through the lease mechanism to then go to pay debt service. So that's, I'm, so if you just think of the lease rental payments as debt service payments, maybe, hopefully, that'll help bring some context to it. So with that, unless council has anything else to add, I, I think we'll, we'll take questions.
Okay, are there, can I, can I just rephrase something real fast before questions, just to kind of check for understanding? So I feel like we went into this like several months ago, a year ago, as a new council person, with the expectation that, that this body was going to issue bonds. But I think what you just told me is that this body does not issue bonds. The building corp issues bonds, and so we just approve this lease so that we can pay the building corp the food and beverage tax, so they can pay the bond. Is that right? Do I have that right?
Yes, yes, and yes, absolutely. You, you are correct. And perhaps, I, I'm not aware of the, you know, conversations from earlier in the process, perhaps this structure hadn't been chosen yet, because it's one of these things, as you build the project, as you take a look at what the expense is going to be, and you start running numbers and figuring out sources, it's, it's possible that there was, you know, a cha, a shift in the way of structuring this. But yes, that is correct. The city is not issuing bonds. The building corporation will be the issuer of, of the bonds.
Okay, so our approval of the lease, though, essentially approves the bonds?
Yes. We would not be able to do this without the council's approval. So all of those steps that are mentioned in this, one of the slides you have in your packet, the, you know, receipt by the governmental unit of the petition, the adoption of the resolution, the conducting the public hearing, all of those steps are necessary. And really, there are so many different legal steps that have, we've taken to kind of get to this point. Many of you may remember the interlocal agreement, because this isn't just a city project, this has been a city-county project. And the convention center operations are paid for by innkeeper's tax, which is going to be continuing to pay the operations of this expanded convention center. You'll notice that, I think in the lease, it says there can also be agreements reached between the city and the CIB. There will definitely be agreements between the city and the CIB because the interlocal calls for that. And so this is, I mentioned before, we are the only county in the state of Indiana that has a food and beverage tax that is split between the city and the county. Most food and beverage taxes go directly to the county. Most convention centers are owned by the county. Monroe County and the City of Bloomington each get a share of this food and beverage tax. And so some of this, you know, the interlocal was required because of that. This decision to go with this lease finance, you know, using this tool in the Indiana Code is to help us avoid the constitutional debt limit so that the city can still issue other debt that it deems necessary for important projects. But yeah, the building corp will be issuing it, but we, you guys are an important body, obviously, and it can't happen without you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Pete Monthyr.
So first of all, going back to the ownership of the project, so we're talking about ownership of the parcel of land to the east of the current convention center, right? We're not talking about ownership of the existing convention center.
The convention center will be owned by the building corp. The existing convention center will be transferred to the building corp for at least the construction phase. I don't know if Buzz wants to talk about that a little bit more, but in, we're doing that in order to avoid the capitalized interest. And I've talked with Jeff Cockrell, we've talked with Jim Whitlatch, so we will, Jeff Cockrell is, is working on deeds to transfer property that the commissioners own to the CIB. The CIB will transfer the, just the parcels necessary for the expansion. That will include the existing convention center, but not all of the rest of the parcels that the CIB received from the county. And then at least during the construction phase, the existing convention center will be owned by the building corp. Now, if we have the opportunity to transfer that back without causing a problem after the construction, we could transfer that back to the CIB. But the interlocal calls for the building corp to be the owner during the period of the debt, because, you know, we couldn't have anybody else owning that, you know, the assets while this debt is, is, exists. So it'll have to be the building corp until the debt's paid off. And then the plan at that point is that it would be transferred to the CIB, and then the CIB would be the owner for the long term.
Okay, so we're talking about the whole convention center?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But the building corporation doesn't have to pay for it? Like they're not buying the convention center? The county is just...
Yes.
Giving it to the CIB, and the CIB is giving control of it?
So that we can avoid capitalized interest. Everybody's got an interest in reducing the cost of this project, and if we don't have to pay capitalized interest, then we can build what we, you know, what we want to build.
I have another question, but I can hold it.
Yeah, thank you for, I'd answered a lot of my questions, actually, but I had, so the operations and maintenance of the facility is going to be, I guess, we're expecting it to be paid by the food and, I'm sorry, the innkeeper's tax. There's also revenue from the, from the vendors and organizations that are coming and paying.
Yeah, right, right.
That's going to be utilized as well, correct?
Yes.
I am just reviewing the Monroe County innkeeper's tax revenues for the past eight years or so. It looks like there is a real drop in 2020, which corresponded to COVID as well, to make sense. It's logical. Is there a backup for that in terms of maintenance and operations for the facility? Or would we expect, if it were a pandemic, for instance, I would assume the convention, people visiting conventions are going to drop as well.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is, for the maintenance and operation, do we have something built in for that contingency?
I'm gonna, I may defer to Buzz or Jessica, or even, as I look at Jeff McKim, I don't know that I want to put him on the spot, but Jeff is such a brainiac when it comes to county funding, and he knows probably the innkeeper's tax better than anybody. But I will tell you, we are also, that's derived by, you know, hotel rooms. We're bringing on a bunch more hotels.
We're bringing on a bunch more hotel rooms. And I think there's more than enough inkeeper's tax right now. So they may be able even to, maybe they already have a, like a debt service, you know, kind of reserve fund there. Jeff, do you want to get up and speak to that?
Do you mind? I'll just make, just make a couple of comments on that.
I guess, you know, to put it in context, Mr. McKim, I, you know, were there any hardships in 2020 in terms of operations and maintenance? Since, you know, right now, you're enjoying almost $4 million last year, well, in 2023, inkeeper's revenue, but it was about 1.7 in 2020?
Yeah. Well, let me just say one thing first. The majority of the costs of operating the convention center are variable costs. You know, there are costs associated with providing services, providing food and beverage and that sort of thing for the convention visitors. So you, if you have a drop in visitation because of another pandemic, you also don't have all those costs. So you don't have the revenue, but you don't have those costs. The other thing that, to answer your question, we did have, when the pandemic hit and the inkeeper's tax plummeted, we were a little bit concerned about, not about being able to provide for the maintenance of the facility, but about the debt service on the existing convention center. So one of the things, now that we've just paid off the, I say we, now that the debt service has just been paid off on the existing convention center, that also creates new revenue of about $650,000 a year that formerly would have been going for debt service that now can go to operating the new convention center. But I think the big thing to keep in mind is that the majority of the revenues for operating the convention center always have and always will come from essentially visitors, the fees that visitors and organizations pay to use the convention center. The majority of the costs that that revenue goes towards is, are variable, are associated with the services provided to the visitors. And then the inkeeper's tax essentially plugs that gap. It, so it funds the difference between the costs and the revenues that the facility actually brings in.
Could I ask one follow-up? Okay. So as I understand it, about almost a quarter of the revenue from the inkeeper's tax come from Airbnbs. And that, are they more profit, do they, do they add more revenue than, say, a conventional hotel per occupant?
I don't have the expertise to answer that question.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if anybody else. That'd be a Mike McAfee question.
Yeah, I need to understand more about Airbnbs and why, you know, it has a huge effect on the community, but that's apart from this. But, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there other questions about this category? Councilmember Pete Monthyr.
Yes, so how does it technically work with the city making lease payments to the building corporation? Does the building corporation, you know, get an invoice for bond payment and then they convert that into an invoice that they send to the city for a lease payment? Sorry, it's kind of a naive question, but how does that actually work?
Like, Tenley was mentioning, it's fairly seamless there as a trustee. I don't know if Tenley wants to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so it will be set up and perhaps, you know, the controller would, you know, want to speak to the actual, you know, kind of fund transfer. But it will be set up so that the payments are made to the trustee. To, so it won't, they won't even really go through the building corporation. The building corporation, like I said, has no assets and has no other debt other than this. So it all is seamlessly run through the trustee, who is the trustee to make the debt service payments on the bond, just like, in that way, it's just like any other debt service payment that would be made by the city.
Is, can somebody explain who a trustee is in this case?
The, most big bond issues rely on a trustee to take, you know, take care of the money so that all the revenues, the city would make the lease payment to the trustee, and then the trustee makes the payments to the bondholders, is how that works. So they're just a conduit, you know. The city, it's the city's food and beverage revenues, that's the security for the lease payments. But there'll be a trustee that makes sure that those bond payments get made.
It's the financing part of a bank.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's held, usually it's a bank that's the trustee. I don't know if we've, have we picked out a trustee yet, Tenley?
Not that I'm aware of, no. We haven't yet. But it is always a bank, like Bank of New York, Mellon, or...
Bank of New York and BOKF, which I think is Bank of Oklahoma Finance. They have a big trust department. They're both in Indianapolis, are probably the two most common ones that I can think of. But oftentimes, banks will have a trust department, and they make sure that the lease payments are made on time so that they can, then the bond payments are usually about two weeks after the lease payment is due. There's usually a lag time. But the city will have control of all the revenues that come in and then making those semi-annual lease payments a couple of weeks before the actual bond payment is due.
And how frequently are the bond payments usually due?
I'm sorry?
How frequently are the bond payments?
Semi-annually, twice a year. So the lease payments are usually due like either January 1st or the 15th, and July 1st or the 15th. And then the actual bond payment to the bondholders would be a couple of weeks after that.
So it'll be pretty much a behind-the-scenes set of transactions through the trustee.
I mean, it's a conduit, yeah. It's, it's just, the trustee is the one who's responsible for making sure that the leases are paid, you know, that the lease gets paid to them, and then they, in turn, make the payments to the bondholders.
Okay.
And that's not just in a lease financing. That's true in most bond issues. I know we've done some, I believe on the sewer bonds, we had a trustee. The SRF program, they always use Bank of New York Mellon as the trustee. And they'll make sure that any unexpendable funds are invested, earning some interest. And, but the majority of the money will reside with the city until the lease payment date is due.
Okay, and just one more clarification. So the bond will be $50 million, and the interest on the bond will be $26 million?
Over the life of the, that's the estimates right now, using a four and a quarter percent assumed yield on the bonds.
Okay. That's a lot of interest. Thank you.
Okay, I have one about ownership. So I don't know who gets to answer the ownership question. I'm on the ARC GIS site. So like currently, right now, the convention center, the current one, and the property where the new build is planned, and then also those parking lots that are west of the B-line are all, the owner is categorized as Monroe County Convention Center Building Corporation. But this says City of Bloomington Public Building Corporation. So I'm a little confused about that. And then also, who's going to own this eventually?
Okay, so right now, it is still owned by the county. Jeff Cockrell is working on doing deeds to transfer it from the county to the CIB. And then the CIB will transfer it to the city. The city will transfer it to the Building Corp. So there are going to be a series of deed transfers. But we are going, ultimately, during the period of the debt, the Building Corp that was just created will be the owner. And the city will pay, as they just explained, we will pay lease payments to the Building Corp, and they'll pay the bond payments. Eventually, after the debt's paid off, the interlocal agreement that the city and the county enter into says that the CIB will be the owner. So there is a statute in Indiana that says the capital improvement board can own these kinds of facilities. And the city and the county had agreed years ago in an interlocal to create this building corp and for the Building Corp to, or I'm sorry, CIB, and for the CIB to be the ultimate owner of the expanded convention center after the debt's paid off. Now, that's 20 years from now. Could things change between now and then? I don't know. Could, but I'm, right now, that's, yeah. And in 20 years, I'm probably not going to be at this podium. I'm just saying.
So
I'm going to be, you know, sitting somewhere
On a beach. I'm wishing. One more quick follow-up on that. Why can't we just transfer directly instead of having all of these intermediate transfers? Because that just seems super bulky.
I asked that same question. It's just the way the county wanted to do it. They wanted to send it to the Building Corp and then to the building, or I'm sorry, to the CIB and then to us. It could go directly from the county, but, and, you know, there wasn't a great reason. I think they want all of the land that they've been acquiring over the years to go to the CIB. They like the CIB. It's sort of a neutral body. It's empowered by statute to hold that sort of land. And they know, everybody knows, Jim Whitlatch knows, the county attorneys know, we all know, it has to come to the city's hands, and it has to be owned by the Building Corp in order for this to happen. And everybody wants this to happen, so those transactions will happen.
Okay, and on all of those parcels, including the ones that are west of the B-line, are all going to end up in the city corp?
Just, no.
Just the ones where there's construction in the current convention center?
Yeah, the current, yes, exactly.
And then those, so those other ones that are west of the B-line are going to stay, they're going to get transferred to the CIB and then stay with the CIB?
Yeah, the ones that are not necessary for the expansion and the existing convention center, those will still be held by the CIB. So all of that stuff south, too, is going to be owned by the CIB.
Okay, great, thank you. That clarifies a lot for me. Are there any other last questions? Councilmember Pete Monthyr.
So how close are we to our debt limit? I know that we're doing this lease financing agreement in order to not have it count towards our debt limit. But what, how close are we actually to our debt limit? Maybe the controller can offer a response to that?
Controller McClellan, I wasn't prepared to answer that question. I don't know off the top of my head without looking it up. But from when we did the 2024 GO bond, we're not close at all. But I can't give you a number at this time. We're not close at all to our constitutional debt limit.
Okay. So again, it's kind of a precaution that we're using this leasing agreement. We could actually incur this as debt?
Our constitutional debt limit, I think, would be completely used up by, or close to being completely used up by this project. It's, Buzz? It's about, our constitutional debt limit is about 37 million, and this project would not fit in that debt limit.
Okay. Can you get back to council members via email about how close we are currently? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Public comment. Great, let's go to public comment, I think, unless there's any of the presenters that wanted to wrap anything else up. Wonderful, thank you all so much for all of that information. That was a lot of information. And I, for one, am glad to have done this at a designated meeting for it instead of when we were then being faced with having to approve the lease. That helps my brain a lot. So if you are a member of the public and you're interested in making a comment about this topic tonight, the convention center, the build, anything that you've heard in terms of all of these many building details and financial details. If you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium, and then you'll have three minutes. If you're online, please raise your hands using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. Is there anybody in chambers who wants to make a comment? I don't see anybody wandering over. Is there anybody online who wants to make a comment? No hands raised. Well, I'll just sit here and like, look at everybody for a minute to see if anybody decides to raise a hand or come over to the podium. No takers, no takers going once. Still no hands raised on Zoom. I guess we don't have public comments tonight. I think that that means that our questions and your presentations were so complete that nobody needs to make any additions. Thank you all for coming. There's several people in chambers, for those online who can't see. So this was clearly of interest to folks. We are at the end of our agenda. And unless somebody has anything else that they want to say up here or any closing comments, then we're adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you next week.